We'll call it the other meeting of the Maryville Town Council. Today is October 13th, and at 6:30. Please stand for invocation and moment of silence.
Let's pray. Oh God our Father, we come to you this evening as we do so many times, asking for guidance and wisdom and knowledge, praying your blessings upon those who guide this community. Father, that the decisions they make, the directions they lead will be a blessing to all who live in this community. Again, Father, we pause to say thank you for those who guard this community, who provide those safety elements. Father, we also pause just to pray for our nation. Father, that you would bring us together and unite us. We pray these things, Father, in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence. Thank you. Commissioner Ward, could you lead us in a pledge?
A pledge I lead to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with no redeeming justice for all.
Madam Clerk Treasurer, can you take the roll, please?
Of course. Councilman Spann.
President.
Councilman Hardaway.
Yep.
Councilman Minchuck.
Here.
Councilwoman Yuzlak.
Here.
And Councilman Pettit.
Here.
Councilman White.
Here.
And Councilman Bella.
Here.
All present.
Petitions, communications, acknowledgements, and remonstrations. We do have special commendations tonight for Maryville Police Officers. Assistant Chief Costa, would you like to lead us with that?
Sure.
And Jeff Minchuck.
Yeah.
Public Safety Committee.
Just about two weeks ago, our Chief addressed the council at meetings about the special work of our municipal police officers. This time I have to tell you that we're pretty much through.
I'll go ahead and read the commendation letter wrote to the chairman here. Excellent work. It was a horrible situation, as perfect as it could end up. So I'll go ahead and read up this commendation bit. I'd like to recognize and make you all aware of the outstanding performance demonstrated by Chief Wiley Luther Catino, Controlman Christopher Davis, Controlman Eric Reed, Controlman Mark Novak, Controlman Nick Enyard, Acting Corporal Corey Nash. On September 3rd, 2020, at approximately 9:32 a.m., Maryville Police Officers were dispatched to the 6,500 block of Barris Street in regards to a suicidal subject. Officers Nick Enyard and Mark Novak were first to arrive on scene. They observed the subject walking around with what appeared to be a rifle in his hands, a large knife in his pocket. Officers Enyard and Novak immediately began issuing reinforcements of the subject in order to try and peacefully neutralize the incident. Officer Eric Reed, Christopher Davis, and Acting Corporal Corey Nash also arrived on scene. Subject's family members told officers that the rifle was not real. However, the suicidal subject was known to officers from prior contacts and had previously been in possession of a real rifle. The rifle which the subject was holding looked like a real AR platform rifle, and there was no way to determine whether or not it was real. Officers Davis, Novak, and Reed took positions and had the subject at gunpoint as a precautionary measure. This was done in case the rifle was real and the subject began shooting in the heavily populated residential area. Corporal Nash notified the NWR SWAT team while instructing and directing additional units placed accordingly. Chief Wiley Luther Catino also arrived on scene and immediately began speaking to and negotiating with the suicidal subject. At one point, the suicidal subject picked up his rifle and moved the rifle from a low-ready position to a high-ready and pointed it at officers. During his movement, Officer Davis was able to quickly determine that this wasn't a real rifle, informing other officers as well. However, the real knife, sorry, however, the large knife in his pocket was still concerned. Chief continued, Chief Catino continued talking to the subject. After about an hour of speaking with the subject, Chief Catino was able to convince him to put the knife down and end the standoff with a handshake and peaceful surrender. The subject then willingly went with the medics to get the help he needed. I commend Officers Enyard, Novak, Davis, and Reed, along with Acting Corporal Corey Nash and Chief Catino for their actions. I recommend that Officers Enyard, Novak, Reed, and Acting Corporal Nash receive a Level 2 commendation for their performance and ability to make the right decision about being placed in danger. I'd also like to recommend Chief Catino and Officer Davis receive a Level 3 commendation. Chief Catino did an outstanding job maintaining communication with the subject and eventually get him to peacefully surrender. Officer Davis' knowledge and experience helped him quickly identify at the right moment that it wasn't a real rifle. His actions ultimately prevented a tragedy. This was a situation that could have went bad quickly. Thankfully professionalism, compassion, and experience led to a perfect outcome. These men exemplify what it is to be part of the Maryville Police Department.
All the town members, let's you know that we recognize you, the local car, sometimes it's like this, that you recognize the town, it's a double factor of all that you need to do. So this time I'd call Officer Davis. Officer Enyard. Officer Reed.
Sir.
I'd like to make a special note that we also got a flag for our chief as well. Although he's trying to be the chief, trying to sort of disperse information, he's still on his preaching the same topic he's been doing for years. But he needs a chief training, he's not for business training, so that he won't, won't be kind of that. Thank you.
Costa, would you step aside? Thank you, officers. Congratulations, guys.
Good work.
Oh, yeah.
They got their picture in there. They must serve in the last room.
That picture, that's good. Okay, moving on tonight to the consent agenda. We have the Accounts Payable voucher approval for October 27th and the approval of the Town Council Meeting Minutes of October 13th.
No move.
Second.
Motion Mr. Pettit. Second, and Mrs. Yuzlak for approval. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion carries. Moving on to standing committees tonight, we have Budget and Finance, Mr. White.
No report tonight.
Council Affairs, Mrs. Yuzlak.
Yes, Mr. President. I have been talking with Pat, her manager, and we will be setting up a meeting within a week or two after we finish some of our other meetings, and it will be regarding ordinances.
Okay.
Okay? And thank you, sir.
Thank you. Moving on to Public Works, Mr. Minchuck.
Nothing new that I haven't said already, but just a reminder, the leaf collection starts very soon here. The complete schedule.
It started.
What's that?
It started.
Oh, yeah. But the complete schedule, thank you, Rich, made me feel bad. The complete schedule's in the Town Bulletin. It will be coming around three times, so if you miss it the first time, bear with us. They gotta go through the whole town. They'll be back around a second time and a third time. Not in the street, just on the curb. Other than that, I know we got some new workers over at the Public Works Department. We're getting the town running. We're getting ready for winter time, so everybody else, please get ready. It is getting colder outside, so remember we get those snow on the street, park on the driveway. Kevin, you got anything? Okay, thank you. That's all, sir.
Thank you. Elections, Public Relations, and Census 2020 Chairman, Mr. Pettit.
Mr. President, on elections, everyone knows that Election Day is November 3rd, next Tuesday, a week from tonight, week from today, all day, 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Definitely get out and vote. Lot of press, lot of advertisements of getting the vote out all across the country, so it's very important. With regard to Census 2020, I have not gotten an update from Nicholas. I don't know if you have, Mr. Bella.
Jan's gonna help us out tonight.
Jan, are you gonna help us out with Census 2020?
I'm gonna try to this evening. I received a letter from Nicholas Elliott, and it says, "Thank you so much, Jan, on behalf of the Chicago region and the entire U.S. Census Bureau. We are extremely grateful for the Town of Maryville's partnership and support of the 2020 Census. Maryville was a real trend center in Lake County, Indiana. We have recorded many of your inspiring accomplishments. Furthermore, it has been a pleasure to work with you, Councilman Pettit, and Town Council President Bella."
Thank you, Jan.
Thank you. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Environmental Affairs, Mr. White.
I just wanted to add, what we probably all know is that the coronavirus is increasing. The percent of positivity rate is way up there. I haven't looked at the hospitalizations at this time, so I don't think that we're out of whack so far. But I do know we gotta redouble our effort because we kinda just, like when things started looking kinda like that, we're going in a different direction. We just kinda just went with the flow. But I think from the information that I'm getting, that the winter and Thanksgiving and Christmas time is gonna really be bad, so I just wanna make sure everybody know that if you got grandparents, be careful around them, because I'm a granddad, so that's it for environmental.
I will add that I did meet with Town Manager Pat Reardon last week, and we discussed if the numbers increasingly get bad, the way it looks now, we may do some adjustments at Town Hall like we did back in March. But we'll talk about it, and we'll announce that if it comes to that, okay?
Thanks for letting me know, Pat.
Personnel Policy and Employee Benefits, Mrs. Yuzlak.
Yes, we will be having a meeting next week regarding our personnel policy and different people that will be hired for the community center. I think that one's this Friday. Am I correct?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Public Safety, Mr. Minchuck.
Mr. President, we are finally slowing down on Public Safety Committee. We've been really busy, but nothing new to report. As you can see, our offices are working very well. I've had also good reports from the Fire Department. Costa, do you have anything at this time?
Nothing to report. The only thing I just wanted to add for Election Day, we stepped up our patrols, so we're gonna have actual extra patrols, and they're gonna be making sure that there's no kind of nonsense happening at any of the polling places.
Thank you, sir. There's all.
Economic Development, Mr. Pettit.
Yes, Mr. President. We had a redevelopment commission workshop before this meeting. We were all briefed. I think everyone was in attendance. Pat laid out some excellent projects that he's working on at Ameriplex, so if anyone has any questions for Pat, I know the press was in there as well, Chaz and Karen, I don't know, they're there somewhere. So just look for the updates from Pat.
Parks and Recreation, Mrs. Yuzlak.
Yes, Mr. President. All the four parks in my area have been rehabbed, and they're looking very good. And the only park we closed was Jennings Street Park approximately a year ago. It was not handicapped accessible. So that's my report on parks tonight.
So you have three parks left?
I have four parks at this time. We had five parks, the one closed. Jan, do you have anything to comment on our rehab with parks?
No, just to let you know, Jennings Park was, um...
Closed.
Removed. Due to the fact that it sat behind neighborhood homes, and there wasn't a way to get people back into that area, particularly there was no ADA accessibility.
Yes, and quite a few of the neighbors were glad that it was closed, because we had teenagers hanging around there late at night, and it wasn't actually being used for the young children. So we did a good job with that.
Very good. Utility Liaison, Mr. Spann.
No report at this time.
Thank you. Abandoned Properties, Mr. White.
Yes, Mr. President. I wanted to talk to, talk about the garage that Pat said would be going toward demolition. I think that's something you and I walked through. I'd still like to get a date on that because it's been sitting there.
Is there any update?
I wanna see it move.
I wanted to speak about the purchase deal.
I have reached out to the contractor, Ryan Construction. They've had asbestos survey done. They should know the results for that in the next week or two, and then I've asked them for a schedule. I want the demolition's gonna commence, so we're just waiting on the asbestos report, and then we'll move from there.
Good.
Thank you. Additionally, Mr. President, you and I had walked on 61st behind the crossroad. Well, it's happening again. Somebody seems to wanna continue to dump back there. I take pictures of it, and somebody's got a little small dump truck, and there's some of that, some similar asphalt out there. This time I also seen furniture out there. Something's going on, and if I have to go out here myself and find these things, then it becomes a real big issue. I have an eye for legal dumping, that's real. I love it. I mean, that's what we should have in the courts, you know, people that are legally dumping on the community, especially when our part of the community is the one that's getting hit the hardest. Just like to see something done a little bit more. I don't know if we put signage up, do we just really crack down on the ownership of that and make them watch their own property? Thirdly, the craters that are at the parking lot around Burger King, Long John Silver's, and in the middle, it's been going on a while, and I can't understand why it's not moving. I mean, it's not getting better. I don't know. I did talk to Pat about it briefly, and I think he came up with the idea, maybe we need to put some hefty fines on somebody, specifically the owners. But that's my ward, and I'm getting multiple complaints about it for a long time.
I think Sheila mentioned that they pulled permits, right, to do the parking areas at Burger King and Long John Silver?
Well, Burger King was did upgrade a couple years ago. Long John Silver went through engineering with Rockerson Engineering to get everything planned out. She has not came back in. But she, I called her the other day when Councilman White was in my office to get an update as to when they plan on getting started with that. And I know it's at the end of the season, however, they did do the engineering with Rockerson Engineering to get everything done. And I'll put in another call, Councilman White.
Get back here.
Okay.
I have a comment. Being on that committee, I have a couple of homes coming up for the hearing in November. I can't remember the exact date, but they are properties that are not being taken care of. And a few other properties in my ward have gotten warnings, start fixing up or whatever. Okay? Thank you.
Mr. White, does that complete your report?
I did have an additional, what we had talked about prior, specifically to the legal dumping. I know you had asked for a plan to be submitted. I don't know if that plan's been developed yet, but we need to have some type of idea of how to address it. I can always point out what's going on in my area, but I think, as you had prior said, that there's other areas that are, people decide to put tires or furniture or mattresses, things of that nature. So I don't know the level of the plan right now, but I know we can't wait until it just get to be January before everything gets started. Thank you.
Moving on to Town Identity and Beautification, Mrs. Yuzlak.
No report at this time, but we are working on it.
Community and Recreation Center Co-Chairs, Mr. Minchuck and Mr. Pettit.
All yours, Sean.
Thank you, Jeff. It is with great pleasure that I am about to read a news release that is the, probably one of the most important, if not the most important item that the Town of Maryville has ever experienced in its 50-year history. The Dean and Barbara White Family Foundation awards significant lead gift to the Town of Maryville to benefit the Maryville Community Center. The Town of Maryville is pleased to announce that the Dean and Barbara White Family Foundation has made one of the largest philanthropic gifts in the history of Lake County, Indiana, to the Town of Maryville for the naming rights of the new Maryville Community Center located at 6,600 Broadway, Maryville, Indiana. The gift in the amount of $10 million will serve to offset operational shortfall in the town's operating budget for the new 95,000 square foot facility currently under construction and scheduled for a March 1, 2021 opening. The gift will be administered through the Legacy Foundation, Maryville, Indiana, in equal annual dispersals, dispersments of $2 million over the next five years. With this gift, the facility will now officially be known as the Dean and Barbara White Community Center, and this name will be reflected on all branding and select signage associated with the $24 million facility. Dean and Barbara White were longtime residents of Northwest Indiana residing at times in both Shelby and Crown Point. More importantly, Mr. White invested heavily in Maryville, especially around the intersection of I-65 and U.S. 30. His investment included the original Holiday Inn Maryville, the Twin Tower Office Building, and the Star Plaza Theater, in addition to many others. Mr. White was very proud of the headquarters, for his international business interests were located in Maryville and expressed that pride in continued reinvestment and ongoing financial support to many local philanthropic organizations. The Dean and Barbara White Family Foundation's mission is to continue the family's tradition of active local support and engagement. The foundation is proud to honor Dean and Barbara's legacy by providing the lead gift to the Maryville Community Center. It is the hope that this center enhances the quality of life for the town's citizens and serves as a gathering place for people of all ages to engage, learn, improve, and improve their physical and emotional health. Words cannot begin to express the town's gratitude for this enormously generous donation from the Dean and Barbara White Family Foundation, said Councilman Sean Pettit, who also serves as the town's redevelopment commission president. Through the foundation's generosity, the Dean and Barbara White Community Center will be able to impact the lives of all Maryville residents, young and old, for generations to come, offered Town Council President Rick Bella. The programs and amenity at the center include a fitness center, elevated walking jogging path, three regulation basketball courts, six volleyball courts, a rock climbing wall, a multi-purpose turf athletic field for both youth football and soccer youth. Additionally, the center offers a multi-purpose community center with a pre-function area available for rent, which can accommodate up to 540 people for social events, and three community flex room meetings. Mr. President, at this time, I'd like to make a motion that we authorize you to sign the naming rights agreement between the Town of Maryville and the Dean and Barbara White Family Foundation.
Mr. President. I'm sorry. Mr. President, I would definitely, definitely, definitely second this motion, and I say that I'm extremely, extremely happy about this, and it's a very, very well thoughtful gift.
We have a motion and a second by Mr. Minchuck for approval. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion carries.
One more item, Mr. President. Patrick, did you give Karen and Chaz a copy of the press release? Okay. That'll be available for you folks.
And whoever else wants it.
Whoever they're, oh, there's Chaz.
They're there, they're here.
He's really wearing that bear's face mask. Halloween. It was scary last night.
Yeah, I was gonna say that game last night.
I have to say, this year has been difficult with the pandemic and everything else that everybody's dealing with, and to have this type of bright spot coming now is just a real shot in the arm for us, and it's gonna help us move this community center forward in a very positive way, and we can't thank the White Foundation enough, so.
And I also think we should thank our lawyer.
Yes.
Our counselor, Mr. Joe Svetinoff, who did a lot of work on all of this with the Bruce White Foundation.
Yeah.
Okay?
Thank you, Joe. Moving on to Lake County Solid Waste Management, Mr. White.
Yes, Mr. President. Leaf collections have started in South County, because, fortunately, Lake County actually runs the South County and the Calumet Township area for leaf collection. It has started. I think it's gonna end on the first day of December, or when they get the first snow. It'll end, and it's gonna be taken to the compost facility on 35th and Chase Street in Gary, where they process quite a lot of leaf waste. I think they've been in business for like four or five years. So that process has started, and that's all I have to add for Lake County Solid Waste. Thanks.
Thank you. NRC, Mr. Hardaway.
No report. We meet next month.
Very good. Stormwater Management Resources Director Matt Lake.
We're just finishing up the contracts for dire construction so they can start our regional detention base on 57. I anticipate they'll be starting next month, and we're also gonna be, probably by the early next year, unveiling an iOS app that was developed by Purdue students through the EPICS program. I've been mentoring them, and we're gonna have two different apps, one for testing construction sites and the other for testing outfalls where water discharges into receiving waters. That's all I have at this point.
Thank you, Matt.
Mr. President.
Mr. White.
I have a question for Matt.
Sure.
Matt, when we're talking about the outfalls, where are those outfalls located?
We have them all mapped out, and the testing sites are randomly selected throughout the system, so I can give you a map. They're all on the GIS system, so I can give you all that information.
Okay, just whenever you get a chance. I just want to know. Thanks.
No problem.
Anything else, Mr. President?
Department reports. Jan, Steve, Sheila, Kevin. Let's see Kevin.
Okay, I do. First of all, I'm very thankful for the gift from Dean and Barbara White. It's a great segue into my report. I haven't really reported to the council at all on the work that we've been doing at the center, so I have a report this evening. Just a couple things. Ruth, my assistant, has been working with Bakos and Richards on the enhancement and the IT infrastructure that's going into the Recreation Center. I have been working with RecTrack. RecTrack is our software program for the Park Department. We just installed the Fitness Center module, and the users of the Recreation Center will be given, once they sign up, will be given a key fob. This key fob will let us know what you've signed up for, what classes, what sports, actually where you are in the center, and it'll also tell us when you leave the center, which is great, because we have 89,000 square feet to check before we close those doors. We're also in the process of changing our gateway processing system. I've been working with RecTrack, and CardConnect will replace Plug and Pay and Fifth Third and Vantiv and offer us lesser transaction fees. The waivers for the RecCenter are completed again, Mr. Svetinoff. We will forward those to you for final approval.
Great.
And I also met with Joe with HQ Productions, which has been a wealth of information for us and helping us out. We're now looking at podiums and risers and a dance floor for the event center, and once I receive those, that information back from Joe, hopefully by Friday, I'll present that to the committee. I'm also working with Rita Basavich with HDW Furniture on the furniture for the pre-function area, and I'm getting quotes for the blinds for the west wall of the event center and the offices. We've ordered some concession equipment, hot dog rollers, nacho cheese, warmers, and things like that. I'm also working with, this is a good one, thank you, Sean, by the way. I'm working with Amanda from Indy Premier. I'd like the council to know that we booked three basketball tournaments totaling $24,500, and we're not even open yet.
That's great.
I've also ordered... I've also ordered staff shirts, and we sent a timeline to the Rec Committee and the Town Manager for the interview and hiring process. I'll share that information again with everybody at the Friday meeting. And lastly, if you are not aware or don't know, this is the Build Indiana magazine. The editor is Nick Demetrovich, and I spoke with him, and their January/February issue, they're going to highlight our project in the magazine, along with core construction and Structure Point. So I'll look for the information, and I will get copies for everybody.
Super.
And that's the end of my report.
Thank you, Jan.
Mr. President, I would be remiss, I got so caught up in the $10 million and all the dollar signs in my head, that we do have a committee meeting Friday afternoon at 3:30, and again, I would encourage, as I did in the executive session, for all the council to attend. Jan highlighted some of the items that are on the agenda, and with the budget and the hiring of personnel, I'd like to have all seven members their input.
Okay. Mr. Reardon, any report from you tonight?
No, sir.
All right. Moving on tonight to General Orders. First reading ordinances, we have none on the agenda. Second reading, we have ordinance 20-15, it's an ordinance adopting the town's budget, and I'll call on Madam Clerk Treasurer and our Financial Advisor, Trista, to come forward and help us with this. I can't see you, Kelly, I'm sorry.
Here I am. I'll let Trista speak to it. It's just...
I would like to read into the record the amounts, so the adopted budget figure, the adopted tax levy figure, and the general budget.
Okay.
Introduce the ordinance.
I am.
Yeah.
This is the ordinance for resolution for appropriations and tax rates. This is basically our budget, and it is the second reading for it. We did have a public hearing on the last, at the last meeting. Our adopted budget is a total of $21,204,623. The adopted tax levy is $13,699,178.
Is there any other legal verbiage we need to add to that, Joe?
Financial consultant.
Trista, do we need to read this in?
Simply, of course, introduce the ordinance by title and whatever fashion you so choose.
It's ordinance number 20-15. Ordinance for resolution for appropriations and tax rates for the Maryville Civil Town.
So Madam Clerk Treasurer, can you just please read the actual paragraph underneath that?
Be it ordained and resolved by the Town of Maryville that for the expenses of Maryville Civil Town for the year ending December 31, 2021, the sums herein specified are hereby appropriated and ordered set apart out of the several funds herein named and for the purposes herein specified, subject to the laws governing the same. Such sums herein appropriated shall be held to include all expenditures authorized to be made during the year unless otherwise expressly stipulated and provided for by law. In addition, for the purposes of raising revenue to meet the necessary expenses of Maryville Civil Town, the property tax levies and the property tax rates, as herein specified, are included herein. Budget Form 4B for all funds must be completed and submitted in the manner prescribed by the Department of Local Government and Finance. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage and approval by the Town of Maryville, to be adopted today.
Thank you, Kelly. Anything else to add, Trista?
A couple procedural things, I suppose. As council is aware, you had the first reading, the introduction of this ordinance at your last meeting. The public was given the opportunity to speak. I don't believe there were any public comments at that time. You do not need to allow for another comment period this evening. You may choose to do so if you wish, but that is not typical operating procedure. The council then can discuss if you so choose, and ultimately take a vote on it. Procedurely, once you vote to accept the budget this evening, the Department of Local Government Finance, excuse me, may I remove this to speak?
Sure.
A little easier. The Department of Local Government Finance will review the budget, make sure that your expected tax levy will balance as you expect it will in your documents, to support the monies that you want to spend. If they find any discrepancies, they will notify us of that, us meaning you all and our office. That includes the tax rate for the debt service, various accounts. In early December, then, is the typical time period when they will send us the, what's called the 1782 notice, where they say, yes, your budget is in good shape, or no, you need to fix a particular piece. We hope, of course, that it is in good shape, which is why you hire us. I expect it will be. At that time, if there is any small adjustment to make to the, for example, debt service taxing rates due to the actual levy that they do assign at that time, we can make that adjustment to make sure that the rates are level, as they were for this past year as well. Right now, they're advertised just a little bit high, so that we know what the actual assessed value will be on the entire town property, and we'll take care of things for you at that time. We then send back, the Clerk's Office and myself will send back within 10 days, our response that we have received their review, and then you are all set for the tax bills for next year, to receive your revenues and operate, hopefully in the manner that you wish.
Very good. Any questions for Trista?
No questions for Trista. She's done a wonderful job.
Mr. President, can I, for the press benefit, our adopted tax rate is .8412. That's total, that we're presenting our budget.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the ordinance 2015.
Motion by Mr. White.
Second.
Second by Mr. Pettit, for approval of our second reading of ordinance 20-15 pertaining to the town budget, and it's all budgets. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk Treasurer, roll call, please.
Councilman Span.
Yes.
Councilman Hardaway.
Yes.
Councilman Minchuck.
Yes.
Councilman Pettit.
Yes.
Councilman White.
Yes.
Councilman Bella.
Yes.
Seven in favor.
Seven zero, that motion passes. Is there a question?
Very good, congratulations.
Thank you.
We, in conjunction with the Clerk's Office, will make sure it gets uploaded tomorrow into Gateway, so that it's viewable by the public, and that will then be the official send-off to the LGF, and you'll be all set.
Very good.
All right, thank you.
I should add, Trista's with Sender and Company, and we changed our process this
year. There was a lot of hours involved with going through the budget process. It was something a little newer for us, but I think it yielded a lot of great results, and I look forward to continuing that process moving forward.
Mr. President, I just wanna, as I pass this around, it's a little bit different from our normal signatures. You guys have to check aye and then side it, okay?
Moving on to resolutions, we have none on the agenda tonight. BZI actions, I see none. I hear none. Old business, any old business before us? Seeing none. New business, any new business before us? No? Public comments, please state your name and address for the record, and limit your comment to two minutes. If you plan to speak, please make sure you sign in on the sign-in paper at the podium. Is there any public comment? Seeing none. Announcements, Town Council meeting, the next one is November 10, 2020, at 6:30. Thank you, Mr. Hardaway. Motion by Mr. Hardaway, second by Mrs. Uselak for adjournment. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Aye.